Month to meet on this October 25th, 2017 is again we welcome you. But at this time, as I've always been a customer of this council, to begin to meet with the pleasure leaders. This time we're going to ask our best friends, Barry, to lead us in this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, it's also been the customer of this council to begin after presentation with an invocation, and we will follow the agenda as it outlined. At this time, if you will bow, we can have the invocation. Father in Jesus' name, Lord, as we come today again, we say thank you. You're the giver of life, and we thank you for an opportunity again to come to this meeting. We pray, Lord, that you give us clarity of thought, eloquence of speech. We pray your blessings upon this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
[applause]
If you have a couple of the agenda you follow the outline, we do have, you know, we do have a change to the agenda, and it would be 10J. We're going to change first reading to amend 2017, 2018 to the budget now. And so, I am standing to be corrected, it would be 9J, and we're going to defer that to the next meeting. 9J will be put in the strike.
And also, Mr. Chairman, please, the 9D is on the agenda as a second reading to approve the special source revenue bond. This council did approve first reading by title only back in July, but that title and the amount of money has changed, I believe substantially since that time, and out of an abundance of caution and in order to promote transparency to the citizens of the county, I believe that this should be amended to reflect that this is a first reading of this new title and a new ordinance as it's been changed and presented to the council in this time.
Do we have an understanding that 9D, it should be the first reading?
Yes, 9D.
9D.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, we ask for a motion to approve the gentleman changes that were forestated. I make that motion. Can't even get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, move right along to number four, approve of minutes, 1817 was a call meeting, 1817 also was a call meeting, 12217 was a regular meeting, 12617 was a call meeting. This time, we ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, approve of the minutes.
This time, we have a, get a second.
Second.
In the first discussion, all in favor, the minute has been approved. Right, move right along to number five, is a public hearing. A and R is to develop the joint county industrial business park in the Egyptian Brown County South Carolina pursuant to Article 8, Section 13 of the South Carolina Constitution, and 4-1-17, the code of law of South Carolina, 1976, as amended to provide for a written review and verification to develop the park and other matters relating thereto. Do we have anyone filling out the sign for the part here? All right, we don't have anyone down, signed for the part here. This time, we need a, part is passed the first reading. The first reading was the 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that would be a best hill that under section nine when it's like.
Section nine. Move right along, 5B, an artist of Dillon County, South Carolina to amend and amended and restate agreement for development of a joint county industrial business park by and among Dillon County, Marion County, South Carolina, Marburg County, South Carolina, so as to enlarge the park and modify the distributive and park revenue in the event of the issuance by Dillon County of certain special source revenue bonds and other matters relating thereto for a bonus.
No one signed it.
There's a motion this time.
Okay, we get a nine.
All right, move right along to 5C, an artist authorized execution of delivery fee and lieu of tax agreement by between Dillon County, South Carolina, and the company known to the county. At this time, if probably by all respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby certain property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including provision of certain special source credits and other matters relating thereto.
No one signed it.
All right, the six, on the new business. A, the partner, A, the employee, other.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as we traditionally do, we acknowledge partner head and employees for exceptional performance, and if you don't mind or whatever you think necessary to give out these cards, we'd like to invite Mr. Larry Jones, you wondering why you're here today? And also, uh, Lois Jacobs and Diane Lewis.
Okay.
Can you get it in her place, Steven?
It doesn't matter. They're all the same.
Okay, we have one from Joe and Betty Williams, along with the community of concerned citizens of sponsoring the October treats for the community, and everyone is invited to come out and enjoy this annual event. It's going to be at the Riverdale Community Center, October 31st, from 5 to 7. Archie's giving $50. Anybody else want to give?
I'll give $50.
Then we have the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center. They are having a Yes We Can Gala on Saturday, November the 4th, 2017, at Brandy's, and they would like for you to do a sponsorship, and if y'all would like to do a bronze sponsorship, if each one of the councilmen would give $45, that would be about in the $300 to $499 range. Y'all want to do that? Everybody in agreement? $45, okay. All right, and then there is, the Taste of Dillon is coming up on Monday night, the 30th, and they have sponsorships. Um, I don't know if y'all want to do that, or just want to do, it's $25 per ticket. You want to do 25? You want to do 25? I'll do 25. Stevie? Everybody got my things out of? All right, so that's all I have then.
This time, I need a motion to approve direct motion request. I make that motion, you get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Get up. Move right along, on the new business on the city seat, all in favor? Mr. Charles, take it.
Mr. Chairman, as he's passing it out, let me preface with this, we reported good news in the budget, that we're already realized some new business with Harbor Freight. This is the prospect of doing more business.
I know you wanted to hurry. If y'all looking, you look at that, we in negotiation with Harbor Freight on getting on their trash business. I did talk with Mr. Chairman to Charlie, so if he's fully aware, and then Mr. Charlie went over all of the, went over all of this. As you see the first page, that would be their monthly fee. That'd be times 12. And if you'll look at the last page, or next to the last one, it looks like this, I believe it's for y'all the last page. The prices on, I got the prices, I got that from Richard and called a lady, and this is the price she sent me. So, if everything goes according to plan, I would like to come back and add the certain $3,700 to implement this product to get it going. That's what it would take, for it to keep going on this product. But I didn't want to come before. I don't want to go to Harbor Freight and say, yeah, we can do it, and then we can't get the trash cans to put out there, because at this time, we don't have the equipment to put out there if, if so desired. Any questions? And also, we've already did some business with Harbor Freight. I don't guess I need to give a dollar amounts, but if Richard wants to, it's fine.
It's already been reported.
It's already been reported anyway.
I got a question, just for the, for the, do I have permission to ask for a question? Just for taxpayers' information, at the end, if we can come up with $30,000 to supply, to supply the equipment out there. We know it's a money-making thing for the county. Just to let the taxpayers know, how much is it at the end, it'll be at the end of the year? All of the, just a necessary.
If we basing it off what they did so far, you know, probably, I'd say, low side $225 a year. I'm just guessing.
$225,000 a year.
It'd be a good account every month. They do a lot of, they got a lot of C and D, they got a lot of wood products, they got a lot of metal.
Can I ask another question? Who is doing this now, the time that they've been out there up till now?
Please call Waste Management.
Okay. So, so you'll be working that out where Waste Management's not there at all?
The proposal without give Harbor Freight goes straight, and it'd be solely Dillon County handling all of Harbor Freight.
Mr. Barry, attorney general said to be correct, that he did not need a motion or a proposal. This is just a proposal, he's talking about coming back later.
Right, I think he wanted to give, I think I'm correct, and he just wanted to give information to you, to you now, and, and will present a proposal to Harbor Freight.
It's already been presented.
Okay, and then bring, bring back the final presentation to the council on the final numbers and the final agreement, is that correct?
Well, and just, then I want the council to know that if we do this deal, we want to make sure we got the money to do it.
We'll just take this as information.
Yes, yes.
All right, move right along under 6B, Humane Society Chili Cook-Off?
Yes, there's going to be a Humane Society of Dillon, I think y'all all have this in your packets. City of Dillon Parks and Recreation, it's their fourth annual Chili Cook-Off, from 11 to 2 at the Dillon Wellness Center, and we have done this in the past, the Humane Society, Mary McDaniel and team of all. If y'all would like to do this again, last year, I think we gave $1,000, so.
I did general fund it, not on our account.
Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion and do the same thing this year. We got a motion that we do the same thing.
That we did last year.
Did last year. All right, need a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Barry, you got anything you would like to say to us, Mr. Mary McDaniel?
I'd just like to say thank you, and all the dogs and cats in Dillon County, thank you. Since I'm the one who handles the money, I'd like to add that I paid $1,200 worth of spay and neuter bills just today for this month. We've spent close to $35,000 since we started spaying and neutering and putting 14 animals. Each unspayed cat can turn into 200 in the space of about a year and a half. So, our aim is to keep animals out of the shelter. So, anything that you can give us, if you pay more than $1,000, we would be thrilled, and we assure you that it'll be spent for that purpose.
Let me see, why are we on this? So, I know yesterday, I saw on Facebook where they were wanting to feed animal shelter. Did you check about getting them some down there?
Did I check?
You know, I called you about getting Richard to find out about getting them some. Did you get that straight, Richard?
I talked with Richard, but I don't know if, if anything was.
I didn't check, but usually Dylan's always having to say.
I know, but there's saying that they didn't have any, and I know the city of Dillon, they're going to donate some, was that right, Mr. McDaniel?
That's right, that's right, and several people have donated also, but they're overcrowded, and at the end of the month, they sort of, they start running that boat.
So, I put a motion. We got one now. I think you'd think you'd just be carried out by.
They did, they had broken bags and things like that, small, yep.
All right, we got a motion, a second, we have a discussion, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Get up, vote. Move right along, 6C, Dillon County Veterans, question funds.
Can't see you hear that as well.
I do, but I thought you were going to do that one, Mr. Barry. Okay, um, this is from Dillon County, South Carolina Veterans of the Year Committee. Really Jerry Huggins brought this by, and it says, once again, time has gone by, and it's time for our annual Dillon County Veterans Day Ceremony. Each year, we present the ceremony and Memorial Day Ceremony and a 911, 9/11, First Responder Ceremony with speakers, food, memorial wreaths, and plaques. Unfortunately, our only funds to defray these expenses come from public donations and/or veterans involved with these activities. Traditionally, for the last 20 years, while I was the Dillon County Veterans Office, Affairs Officer of Dillon County, graciously gave $500 annually to help cover these expenses. So, Jerry Huggins is asking if y'all will give $500 to help cover the expenses for the veterans.
This time, I have to pay the motion, you give them five, one.
I make the motion, you give them five, one.
You get a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Get up, vote. Move right along, 6F, Agreement with Trico Water Company Regarding Moving Water Lines.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, an agreement, due to the Harbor Freight expansion, there's certain water lines that'll have to be moved, relocated, and configurations changed to accommodate that expansion. This agreement will, would provide, Dillon County's going to have those lines moved or cause them to be moved, and installed in a new location, and that, and they'll be located in the new easement locations that, that we're dealing with on the expansion of the facility. Once those lines are in place, then we would transfer the easements to Trico Water, so they can maintain them after that. Now, that would require us to come back to you at some point. My belief is it requires us to come back to you at some point to have three readings on an ordinance to convey the easement, because that's an interest in, in real estate. I believe we have to do that, we can do that after that, when we get to that point.
If we have everything worked out, this time, it'll be before we do.
I believe, I believe so, Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right, this time, we get a motion concerning the water. We think with Trico Water Company Regarding Moving Water Lines, I make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Get up. All right, move right along, 6G, Fort Convenient Site Lease.
Mr. Chairman, this is a lease for the Fort Convenient Site, it's a five-year lease, for the sum of $2,000 a year. It's going, you know, the agreement's as of today, but it will begin November 1st, and continue for five years after that, with the option to renew that lease after that.
So, I get a motion concerning the convenient site lease, the fourth.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, and we got a second, any further discussion?
And, they did get straight on that back money to those people, because we got material on that.
There're not going to be any back. We'll just pick up from right here, and that's going to be.
Maybe an agreement with that.
That's right.
Motion, a second, we have a discussion, any further? Not all in favor? Get up, vote. All right?
Item seven, what now, I said, general fund account, we got $1,278,969 out of that, we got accounts payable, $431,513. Leaves us a net available funds to spend at $847,466. And I got the total amount of restricted funds that we had in our account, but we can't spend, at least on a certain specific project, but the balance on restricted funds,
Mr. Barry, move right along, administrator.
Mr. Chairman, council, just a couple items here. Uh, yeah, demolition efforts is something we took on at the beginning of the year, and I do think it's making a difference. I watched Steve and them over in Newtown, and it makes a significant difference when you tear down a, a building. I will say, it is a costly effort, we have a lot of costs associated with that, but I think it's something that is making a difference. We're getting out as many as we can, starting to get, you know, quite a bit of requests. I had Councilman Cowherd to ask me to acquire on the commercial teardown as well, which would be very expensive, but there are some places that we really need to address from a commercial standpoint, so I put it on the administrators' list served throughout the state, you got a hodgepodge of things, I forward, and I should have given all of the, I forward. Did I, did you get the one from Florence? No, Robert, you didn't get that? In an email. So, I'll bring forward you what some other counties are doing, and we'll address that at a later date, if that's okay. Uh, second item, Nisa Conferences, which is their annual Fall Conference in Oyster Rose. Each of you invited, it's Thursday, November 9th. Conference goes between 12 and 5 at Victor's. You'll enjoy, all you have enjoyed relationships with Jim Newsom, President and CEO of the Ports Authority, he'll be their featured speaker that day. Then there's a social hour and Oyster Rose act, and that's behind Victor's, so we'll remind you of that invite. Uh, something we're doing a little different here that, that I won't present to you, we've decided, me and the chairman have talked about a media appreciation luncheon, we're going to have that at Shuler's, November the 15th. That'll take place at noon. Anderson Brothers Bank was very happy to sponsor that entire event. We'll have the general managers from T V 13, 15, 10, we'll have Dillon Harold, who's always loyal to us, the boy of his, so we'll present some awards that day, and we'll have the chief of staff and Congressman Wallace's office there to give us the keynote. So, that should be a real good event, we'll have county leaders to attend that. Uh, one thing that we've been planning a long time, Moses Hayward, we've got the fireman workshop, which is 10 a.m. Friday, and that's something we'd very much like the Public Safety Committee to be a part of, we'll do that at 10 a.m. Friday. Scotty would love y'all to try to make that. He's got an agenda that I'll forward you ahead of time, I'll forward that to the entire council. Uh, then.
Is that about some new policies today?
Yeah, yeah. So, we would invite y'all's input there on that. We won't pass any, there won't be any policies made that day, this is just more of a workshop. Okay. And then finally, Thursday at 9:30, we've got Enterprise Fleet Management, a lot of counties are using this system in terms of their cars, and it's very intriguing, Richard and I have sent here two presentations, so we'd like to invite the administrative committee here, that's tomorrow, at 9:30, if you can make that, to hear that presentation. Regardless, we'll have them back in front of the entire camp, the sheriff will be here for that too, but regardless, we'll have them back in front of the entire council to make that presentation. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Move right along, 9A, artists, third reading, artists to develop the joint county industrial business park in the Egyptian Brown County, South Carolina, 8, Section 13 of the South Carolina Constitution, and 4-1-17, the code of law of South Carolina, 1976, as amended to provide for the written review of Marburg County, to Marion County, to develop the park and other matters relating thereto.
That's, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's hunted here, and again, that's just to make it a multi-county park, as we discussed, this is third reading.
99.
This time, we get a motion, pass third reading. I made that motion, pass third reading, you need a second.
Second.
Now, any further discussion? All in favor? Get up, vote. 9D, third reading, artists of Dillon County, South Carolina, to amend, to amend and amended and restate an agreement for development of a joint industrial business park by and among Dillon County, Marion County, South Carolina, and Marburg County, South Carolina, so as to enlarge the park and modify the distributive and park revenue in the event of the issuance by Dillon County of certain special source revenue bonds and other matters relating thereto.
Uh, this is also the third reading, this is Project Badger, and again, I'm careful to say, this is not enlarging the park with the, with the three counties, but yet bringing the, the development areas within the park, so, third reading on this.
Mr. Attorney, I'm going to need to change the wording, because you've been in origin.
Well, how do you say that?
It's not real state enlargement.
It's, it's not, it's extent, the, the park is set, the boundaries of the park are set, I understand, there's certain parcels into what we call the park, but statute requires you bring certain parcels into the park for purposes of special source revenue bonds or fee and lieu agreements and that sort of thing, and that's what this is doing, it's not making the park any bigger than it is, I think that, but I think this will, this will, this will get to the edge of the park, and there won't be any more after that, I think this is going to be the end of the expansion, that can go to the end, but I, I mean, if you have heartburn about that word, we can certainly ask Brandon to revise that, if you're not satisfied with that.
If you're satisfied with it, I'm fine, I mean, this is, now, all this is a legal process, and it's a legal document, and there's also two being recorded, and it does have this wording in it, but if you are a legal counsel.
Right.
If you're fine with it, sure, I am too.
And, and I, and it is, I mean, there's, there's, it's not, it's not extending the park beyond what you all under, is what I believe you all understand the tri-county park to be, it's just enlarging the, what's required by the stat, to be covered by the statute, so that you can give the fee and loos and that sort of perspective, be covered by the special source revenue bond that you're trying to generate.
All right, I'm fine, I'm fine. This time, we get a motion, pass third reading. I make that motion, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Get up, vote. All right? And 9C, third reading, artists authorized execution of a new revenue fee and lieu tax agreement by between Dillon County, South Carolina, and the company known to the county. At this time, if projects by all respect to certain economic development properties in the county, whereby certain property will be subject to certain payments and lieu taxes, including provision of certain special source credits and other matters relating thereto.
This is also third reading, Mr. Chairman, and this announcement will be made tomorrow. I think each of y'all been furnished a press release in your, in your box, if you don't have that, we'll make sure to get it before you leave today, because you're probably going to get a call tomorrow.
Motion this time, pass third reading.
Make a motion, pass third reading.
A second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Get up. All right, 9D, we change this to the first reading.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
First reading, second, such an artist provided for the issuance and sale of a not exceed $2 million dollar special revenue bond issued 2018, Dillon County, South Carolina, prescribed in the form in detail of such bond provided for the payment of the bond and position of the proceeds thereof, pending Article 14-11, Dillon County, Captain, change the definition of pledge revenue and other matters relating thereto. This time, you want to comment on it?
This is just to approve special, special source revenue bond, and quite frankly, this is, has, has to do with the road expansion and some other issues that, for Project Badger. This is the one that originally, I believe, was a million dollars, and it's, it's had to expand to accommodate the, the increase in the expenditures that we're going to have out, out there for the road, and, and some of the costs associated with the road.
Make sure, get the motion, pass first reading this time.
Make that motion.
A second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I got some. Mr. Barry, own this $2 million, up to $2 million, is some of that already, money's already been used?
Yes, what it is, is just to put us in a position, so we have it in place, when we find out exactly what the road is going to cost. Um, actually, we already had $716,000 outstanding on the previous special source revenue bond, since the same, uh, properties income's being pledged, it's that they're going to tack on to that one. Be one secured agreement, two separate notes.
So, we have two mortgages.
Well, you just have to bring one mortgage, two notes.
Okay, one more question. How is this money going to be paid back? Is it going to be paid back by the?
Is it gonna be paid back by the fifty thousand dollars that each county gives, or is it gotta be tied up with the taxes that come off the property?
The top. Depending on how the counties pay it, if they pay that, tri-county pays fifty, if not, then we'll take it out of the proceeds, tax proceeds, pay it.
What are they holding for collateral for that? I mean, are they gonna hold the fifty? I mean, because I know what I need to fifty one day.
Where we'll have the, the taxes, because taxes run through us, we'll have that as collateral, make sure, ensure payments being paid.
And that'd be for all three counties?
Yes, uh-huh.
Now, who's gonna be responsible, is it all three counties, or just Dillon County citizens?
It'd be just Dillon County.
With Marion and Marlborough, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion, we gotta send that, discussion, need a second, all in favor? First reading? Any opposed? All right, moving along, but nine A.
I didn't, I'm not sure I know what those were, Mr. Chairman.
We'll do it again. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thanks, quick, quick. All right, moving along, but nine E, first reading, Office to amend agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, twenty sixteen park, Dillon and Marlborough Counties, someone adds to the mortgage department.
That's also project, but we got a little behind on this one, but there's no ramifications in doing so, and this is the ninety-nine percent, one percent.
Motion, pass first reading.
Right.
Got motion. Okay, then we get a second.
Second.
We have any discussion? Motion, a second, any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Right, nine F, first reading, Office by Dillon County Council towards making officials only map for Dillon County, to rezone a portion of land owned as tax map number zero four one dash four two dash zero zero, zero zero one, be owned and wired and reach you with kids from rural to general commercial. Proposed location, Highway three one north Dillon South Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, this next several items, uh, council has any questions, I think, I forgot Larry Jones with us, so any, any questions you'd like to answer, he's, he's here to answer, ask, he's here to ask.
They got, they got the name sold with somebody, that they just wanted to respond, or?
Well, this particular parcel is a, a parcel that was, uh, originally done as a residential district, and it joins on commercial district, and I think they want to sell the property for a commercial.
The committee recommended us-
It has been recommended through the planning permission years.
Motion, ma'am? Do you think that you got a recommendation for them?
Yeah, I'm gonna make one.
What was the recommendation?
They're welcome, that, that was the change at the, the committee.
Yes, yes.
Isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, use motion this time, first reading.
I make a motion for Harbor Freight.
We get a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on, nine G, first reading, Office by Dillon County Council to amend the officials' only map, Dillon County to rezone a portion of land owned as tax map number zero six nine dash zero zero dash zero zero one, dash zero nine nine, property on the, I name is Glenn McCormick, from General Commercial, to rural, property on, to rural, proposed location, Highway fifty-seven, Dillon, South Carolina.
Your motion, motion like Dillon, is that?
Yes, sir, all of these will be just like that, if already-
This particular piece of parcel is located about, about Land Hill Road, uh, eastward, uh-
I'm just making this.
On Highway fifty-seven.
All right, need a motion this time, pass first reading.
I make a motion, we pass the first reading.
We get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? Moving on, nine H, first reading, Office by Dillon County Council to amend the officials' only map of Dillon County, to rezone a portion of land owned as tax map number zero three four, dash zero zero zero, dash zero two six, property on the water to Jack Price, from General Commercial to rural. Need a motion this time, pass first reading.
Make a motion, pass first reading.
We get a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? Moving on, nine A, first reading, Office by Dillon County Council to amend the officials' only map, Dillon County to rezone a portion of land owned as tax map number zero six nine dash zero zero dash zero zero, one zero two, property on the water to Jack Price, from General Commercial to rural. This time, do you motion, pass first reading?
Make a motion, pass first reading.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, nine J, you deferred that to the meeting, moving along, item ten, resolution and proclamation, eight, resolution making application to the State Fiscal Accountability Authority of South Carolina, or approval of insurance by Dillon County South Carolina of special source revenue bond Harbor Freight to the project, and one or more series of bonds pursuant to the provision of Title Four, Chapter twenty-nine of the federal law of the State of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six as amended, in a purpose of amount of not to exceed two million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, this is related to the ordinance that we just discussed, the, the special revenue bond. Um, this is a resolution just notifying the State Fiscal Accountability Authority and asking for their approval of the issuance of this bond.
Thanks, sir, this time you motion, pass the resolution. Make that motion, need a second.
Second.
We do have any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Moving along, what the legislature for media coverage?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, you'll have in front of you a proclamation that we'd like to give out at that particular, uh, meeting, uh, media, Shuler's, and, uh, so just looking to pass that if y'all comfortable with the language, that you put a plaque and hand out to them. Uh, this right here is another item that I forgot to give to you earlier, and there'll be some special awards, and I don't, I don't want to award these names, but I'd just like to make sure everybody is fine with those names for our special.
You got that on you?
But they do get a proclamation, they're on a proclamation.
All right, this time we need a motion, pass ten B, proclamation for media coverage. I made that motion, need a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of proclamation for media coverage? All right, moving along, level eleven, appointment, eight, reappointment of Carolyn Newport to the Library Board District Two, Jack Scott.
Yes.
He motioned this time to approve the reappointment of Miss Carolyn Newport to the Library Board District Two.
I made a motion, should be reviewed.
Second.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All right, not all in favor? Any opposed? Level B, reappointment of Levain Mitchell to the Library Board District Three, Archie Scott, requires a motion.
I make that motion.
Can you, we get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Mr. Levain Mitchell? All right. Level C, accommodation tax appointment, power move.
I don't want any part of this time.
We're gonna be in the way at this time, all right? Ladies and gentlemen, we got an executive session, we cannot best the matter, um, you know, miracle and focus industrial performance, um, don't know how long it'll be while we're in executive session, but the law does allow us to go in the executive session for certain, and things goes along, and even if it does the matter, it would be one of them. So, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I make that motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? If you guys wanna wait outside of the council chamber till we be convenient, you may do so, and as soon as we through, you may come back in. Action taken, and there can be no action taken. Mr. Minister, do we have anything further?
Uh, no, sir, other than, no, sir, other than-
Do you have anything further from the fellow council members? All right, this time we'll take a motion to your chair. Make that motion, we get a second.